Good evening, I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order Tuesday, April 14th, in 2022 at 7:00 PM. Bottom line is because we're still doing the virtual meetings, I get it. This meeting is held in person, virtual session being video and audio recorded. We're members of present, so we don't have to worry about that. Public input should have been in 24 hours in advance. And if you want to speak during Audience of Citizens, please raise your hand, wave at us, or get into the chat. And when we unmute your microphone, please include your name and address in any manner that you are making a comment. Next, please join me in the Fledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think emotionally approve the agenda as it's been presented. Anybody change his additions? All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Audience of citizens, anything not on the agenda? Once again, I'd like to introduce Connor, who is our town representative for the Chronicle. Again, I always like to see him here. He's been here many times and he's put us on the front page of the Chronicle. We'll see all good things. Thank you very much for the way you covered the town. You really put a very nice light on. No old business, new business. Establishment of the 2022 Annual Budget Town Meeting, I move to establish a fiscal minutes of April 10th. I move to approve the board's regular meeting management. Any special? Bill wasn't here to talk. He's long distance. Anybody? All those in favor? So we need to set the town meeting for the annual budget. I move to establish a fiscal year 2223 annual town budget meeting for Tuesday, May 10th, year 2022 at 7:00 PM in Yeoman's Hall. 323 Blue 87 Columbia, Connecticut, for the following purpose: to take action on the proposed annual town budget for fiscal year 2022, 2023. Copies of the proposed budget are available online at the website of columbiact.org, as well as in the town clerk's office. So, May 10th, 7:00 PM, Yeoman's Hall. All those in favor?
Just, isn't there a meeting beforehand? It's just not, no, it's just possible. Don't we usually have like the week before?
There's a public hearing.
Public hearing, thank you. Okay, but I'm just, we should mention it. That's all.
So mentioned?
So mentioned. When is that?
8/27. 7 in Yeoman's.
Hey, that's all.
Away from tomorrow.
Yeah.
Yeah.
7.2, Presentation of the Joshua's Trust Annual Conservation Award. To me.
To you?
You know, this is, many cooks, you know, spoil the soup. Many, many conservationists helped us go forward, so, I mean, I was a still just a small part, so. Yeah, thank you very much. Am I going to get up and read some?
You're good at this kind of thing. Joshua's Trust tracked conservation and historic trust is a nonprofit conservation organization, which protects nearly 5,000 acres in the quiet corner. Ensuring that all of that open space will be protected and perpetuated. The Joshua's Trust service area extends throughout 14 towns in Wyndham and Tomlin counties. And they, many of the properties are open to the public so that they can appreciate and enjoy. They also maintain two historic sites, the Gravelyville, of course now, and the Atwood Farm, where our headquarters are in Meals Street. Annually, Joshua's Trust recognizes outstanding volunteers within our organization. But they also recognize volunteer groups and individuals outside of our organization who have made significant contributions to this conservation of open space. So, this year's individual conservation award is given to Stephen Everett, for his efforts in land contribution, in land conservation. Columbia's been working for many years, as you all know, on that's an acre priority forest wetland in southeast corner of town. We had limited success with that until our first selection got on board and came and stood about the project. So, the 2022 quote goes to Stephen Everett of the town of Columbia. His efforts, his efforts. We have got one more paragraph there. His efforts resulted in the acquisition of approximately 600 continuous acres of priority forests and that connecting two state parks. With his work, this project has come to fruition. And we have Joshua's Trust a very proud presentist.
Thank you very much. I will tell you, we have, we have cornerstone like Ian. You know, I felt like I, I felt like I was a mule and you were right behind me, you know, helping me navigate until that's right, but you know, looking at it and talking to you about it and looking at the park and everything. It can be so open and wonderful and it really can, you know, and selfishly bring some business to the town of Columbia and the surrounding area. You know, I was thinking about it. There's probably very few days when you talk about conservation, it's the first snowfall of the winter. You're out there, it's crisp, it's fresh. It's probably springtime when you can get out there on that first 70-degree day and walk it through there. And really, it's when you see the kids riding their bikes by on the trails and stuff. It's really very nice. I mean, it's time to stop and just think about what's going on and appreciate what we have. So I'm very honored to get this and to be a part of this, believe me, a small part. There's so many people behind us who deserve this probably a lot more than I do. We'll keep going, okay?
But you see, they're all members of Joshua's Trust. And this is for, this is for now, land.
Read that, and then we'll, we got more.
Cameras are way too good today.
I totally agree.
I had to take my bath, swab, and soak the rainwater.
All you gotta do is invest 18 grand with a new ticket. Well, thank you very much.
This award was actually awarded at the Joshua's Trust annual, but Stephen was not getting there, so so I couldn't let him get away with it. I had to do the careful thing and apologize for this.
2022 boat porn lottery. So, we have 14 slips and by 3 o'clock today, we have 14 people. And then somebody came and said, oh, I forgot. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna pull one and the one we pulled is not get a slip. Right? So my deputy selectman. Brian McDonald.
Ryan.
Ryan McDonald. Yeah, okay, so he doesn't get it.
So we're sorry.
Yeah, and the board, the recommendation from the rec director was he would prefer the board's selection would change instead of lottery to have, no one can apply until April 1st. And then after that, it's first come, first served, so we fill up. And then we just say, once we're full. What if they're down in Florida and they can't be here April 1st? There's no good way to do it, it's just
Do you remember the conversation that you had with Louie Caddy when you first got here? Took you aside and said, people don't like change.
I know. But this, this was a no-brainer back when it never filled up.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you have never had it filled, have you?
It's all, it's been, the last couple of years, it's been closed. And then it did fill. Oh, you're Indian, because you're, we had eight people on the slips, eight, so you didn't get it was just the more, it was one more than we had. So, leave it the way it is.
Like I say, Ryan, you're the winner, but.
I know.
Okay, 7.4, approval to accept the ESS proposal for the 2022 annual limnological data gathering, analysis, and related consultation regarding Columbia Lake. Yeah, I know, I've studied. I'm, we'll get to that, I'm gonna get to it. I move to approve the ESS proposal for the year 2022 annual limnological data gathering, analysis, and related consultation regarding Columbia Lake as presented and authorize Mark Walton to sign the contract for the town of Columbia. Okay, so here's what happened. The lake needs to be tested yearly now. Every month, I believe we're gonna test it every month. And an outside firm is gonna do it. We can do it. Volunteers, I was here with LMAC and they said they can talk about getting volunteers to do it in off weeks. But it needs to be tested because as the water warms and the runoff comes in and the fertilizer used on wherever in town come into the lake, that's why we're seeing the algae and the growth and we're not mixing up the bottom enough to get the sediment, the leaves and stuff that settles down there. So, they need to test it and analyze it and keep an eye on it and treat it, yes.
For what, a retesting?
Well, you know, every year when we have a floating algae that goes around and we're testing the water quality and we're gonna analyze it and like, well, we're looking, we're gonna do a test for how far you can see through the water. You know, the succubus and oxygen levels, like we always have. It used to be like 30 years with Bob Corbin.
And bacteria?
Bacteria, cyanobacteria, which is a new, bigger concern.
Yep. So, we've lost Bob Corbin.
Bob Corbin sold his business to, which is now GZA.
Okay.
And we also had another big bidder that we
So this went out to bid?
Yes, so LMAC chose ESS group, which GZA is a very large corporation, ECS group is like 24 people, more local. ESS is also going to analyze for water coming into the lake, what kind of things are coming off the lawns, coming out of the giant cactus area up there. So, it was a very in-depth analysis between the two companies. And LMAC and myself and a team from LMAC, and Stephen was on the final meeting, we were talking about it. They, they would like to take this opportunity to try another company called ESS. And ESS came with almost $10,000 less than the existing company.
So we even know the Rhode Island, they've got
They have a rep we work with in Connecticut.
What's the cost? I'm just, it's like 18.
Yeah, we have, we have 20, I think 20 we budgeted, but the limnologist part is 18 and then you probably have another 2, 2,600 and 3,000 for testing at the UConn lab. There's a local lab we'll be using. So, I, the contract is not quite perfected. I'm still working on it, Mary's a photo, she'll be coming back Monday. We'll tweak a few things. I just want the board to authorize. Stephen's going to sign, but I'll just do a final scene to what we have.
Okay, so this isn't anything really new, we just
Right, we're just changing vendors, I want you to be aware of it. And it's actually still gonna be within the budget.
You know, a little bird is on my shoulder talking to me about Mono Pond. We're not testing Mono Pond. Mono Pond at this point, and I think three years ago when we talked about trying to do some things in Mono Pond, we couldn't come up with a solution and Mono Pond was almost, you hate to say, lost. However, I think we need to contact the state and try and find some some help to bring Mono Pond, get it under control and stuff like that, but it's very, it's so costly.
It is a state slave.
Okay, yeah, we told them
The reason we have the problem is because of state boat launch.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask Ian to, Ian, I'm gonna recognize you because I know you're
Yeah. Chairman of Conservation.
Yes.
Okay. I'm not talking about the invasive. You're right, they've taken over Mono Pond because of boat launch. But Mono Pond is the other Columbia lake and I'm wondering if once it's wide up, somebody might wanna test the water quality. Because when Bob Corbin did the whole, did his thing there and studied Mono Pond and sent back a report that said there's not much you can do. He also at the time tested the quality and he said that water quality was good, it's good already, it was good. Fish are happy, you know, that kind of thing. So, I'm not looking, because no one swims there, I'm not looking to test it every week or ever, like the lake. However, people fish there and they do probably eat those fish. And so, maybe once a season or once in a while, if we could just test the water quality. If you could add that into the contract, well, they're here.
Okay, I'm gonna do that.
It's a good idea.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You commented on the invasive species there. What's the situation with that? It's a lost cause?
And unless, I think we take more money than God adds to effectively get rid of the invasive.
It's good for fishing.
A really good foothold. And it's a different kind of lake. It's shallow, lots of sunlight. And so, invasive is just crazy.
I think there was a couple of choices. They were gonna bring in invasive, invasive clint-like park that just died.
Well, they were, they were neutered.
They don't reproduce, they eat, they eat, the other thing was to drain the pond to a certain level and try to eradicate it that way, but it's really, it's, it's taking over at least a third.
I think Corbin recommended, don't do any, just let it.
Can people
Oh, absolutely.
So it's not so bad that they can't get through?
And if you go out there, well, it's cold in winter, it looks great. You can't see a single
It's gorgeous. The water's still crystal clear.
In July and August, you could practically walk across the big
In the back.
Nope. So, but it would
It's tremendous.
I think if you drained it and dragged everything out, you can't get all Yeah, I don't come back. And it would ruin it. So, it kind of is what it is, but it's still good to keep an eye on it, a professional eye on it. Just in case something
But, we'll get into it right now, we're gonna go on the ESS proposal. All those in favor of having to sign a contract?
Aye.
All right.
I was also giving more I mean, that's what we are.
7.5, approval to authorize Energy Unlimited, the Murphy House HVAC system. I move to approve the vendor Energy Unlimited LLC proposal to install a ductless heat pump system for heating and cooling at the Murphy House at the cost of $12,000.
Explain why. Please do, I'll tell you, so we got three quotes. The high quote was $15,364. The low quote was $11,195. So, the facilities director, Jason Nosad, has recommended the $12,000 quote because what they used was larger, it says here in this justification, sizing of the equipment is larger. It will allow for another indoor unit to be added if the need comes due to upgrading or remodeling. So if we ever use the attic, or if we ever want heating units in the lifeguard area or the bathroom hall, you could have. So he's saying it's worth the extra $800 to have
I agree.
the ability to add.
Who does the electrical work? I mean, I see they all excluded that, but it's that
It comes with, when these systems, it's included in the cost, it should be. Because I had it put in my house and they said it's X amount. They have the electrician's license.
It says here, line voltage wire to heat down my house.
Well, so
And this one excludes the electrical work and this
Right, right, they've all excluded electrical.
So, it must be coming out of this budget for contract, for HVAC, for, at the HVAC.
We have, we do have an HVAC budget. We put $10,000 in that.
Is this going on 21, 22, or 22, 23?
21, 22.
So we have money left in that HVAC?
In the HVAC budget.
More? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, opposed? So I keep it. So we were sent a notice by the state DOT for the installation of centerline rumble strips on Route 66. Nearly like at the plaza down there, running all the way to the overpass in Willamette. Okay? And they wanted to know how we felt about it. I didn't wanna make, I know how I feel about it. I wanted to bring it to the board, see how you feel about it. But also, they are gonna tell you now, there is a dotted passing, small, coming westbound on Route 66 East, in front of the main moose. It starts right at the corner there, where Atkins garages. And it's basically there, I went down and looked at it today, because I didn't remember any passing zone.
There's a passing zone there?
Yes, there is. Westbound dome. So it, it starts right when you get by the corner there and it ends about 100 feet before the entrance to the main moose. So basically, anybody coming out of there, now that that is well-established down there, anybody coming out of there, they're going to be a target for anybody who's passing on that strip. So we're going to ask DOT at the same time, if we decide on the rumble strips, we want that no passing. As a no passing area. So, the call is going to be placed after we discuss this. I don't like the noise of the rumble strips, but honestly, there was a death down there three years ago. Last year, there was an accident with an elderly couple trying to pull out of the main moose area. I do think that it's, it's very, and I've been down there eating and it's the speed on which people go on that thing is
Too much, so this would help.
It's not gonna solve it, but it could help.
Yeah.
So.
It wakes you up. I mean, you hear it when you go over those things.
You're sleeping, you're driving.
There's a passenger seat that can start you.
So, I move to support the installation of the centerline rumble strips in the area of Route 66, should be Route 66 East, a distance of 1.8 miles, as described in the kinetic department transportation letter. Is that in here, Mark?
Yeah.
Great. Dated March 9th, 2022. In addition, to ask DOT to eliminate the passing zone in same 1.8 mile strip.
See if you can throw in a couple of traffic signals too, like at Pine Street and West Street there.
You know, honestly, Bill, we've asked them how many times and we
We can't even get a left-hand turn.
We really need left-hand turns.
It needs to be widened or it needs to be, right now, it's just an invite to go around and that's what people are getting
Would this kind of thing help over there, these things in the road?
I think it needs to be widened, so you have a turn or you have, it needs to be narrowed, so there is no going around. Thanks for throwing that in, but we're gonna have to pass on it. Any other discussion? Yes, here, what can I please, as the traffic authority?
If the chute down here, that up from Old Willamette Grove down past Casc station, you go down there, could we have a run strip there? Because I'm scared to death, there's nowhere to go. You know, there's a cliff on one side and a cliff on the other.
And guardrail the whole way, though.
And there's nowhere to go if somebody crosses the line. Anyway, just, just
In our, in our acceptance, we'll ask that the DOT comes out here and we move over a couple of different areas. Yeah, just trying to, if you've looked at Yeah, just trying to, if you've looked at everything Columbia, people are screaming about the speed on all the back roads and stuff.
On all the roads.
All the.
It's excessive everywhere.
So.
It's been excessive for a while.
It's, it's cars handle too well. We, we need some.
And distracted driving as well.
But people, it's so easy to go much faster than it should be going. Cars just are too nice.
It's the people that are driving.
All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. You know, I've asked the state police to come out here. You wanna balance the state budget? Spend a couple of days writing tickets on it that way. I just wish we got a cut of it. Not that I corroborate them.
Regret? Yes, it's actually probably the.
It was, it was.
Probably four, four, five inches down there. That's my guess.
It's not much.
Yeah. There was a lot of rain last night.
It was coming over the wall.
Two, three inches?
I don't know, I had a flood when I woke up one morning, I remember that.
Yeah. Appointments. Move to accept the appointment of Stephen Goff Jr. To the position of public works highway maintainer. We found somebody.
Yeah.
He looks very tall.
So far, he's a great fit to the team and we're happy to have him. He's got a lot of experience and he's got.
It was just a trial period, so we went and bring him on.
Wait.
All those in.
Six months.
Close, thank you. Town administrator report.
Alright, I just want everybody aware, CCM Connected Conference of Municipalities has created a landing page on their website. We can, if you'd like, I could make that a link on our website. But it's a landing page to partner with the National League of Cities, which are our over encompassing group of all the CCMs around the country that direct you to the Ukrainian humanitarian fund at United Nations where you can donate. And for things Ukrainian people might need. So I think they're off the board, they want to authorize that link to, they put this together to try to make a safe way if someone wants to donate that has been vetted by CCM.
Yeah, I always question when you donate stuff.
I know.
That this is legit.
That's what CCM came up with. Other towns have done their own. They've partnered with the Red Cross or with other international agencies themselves, but I just threw this out to the board in case you're interested.
I would wanna know what they take for administrative.
Cut?
Cut.
In the United Nations.
Oh, yeah, I, I'm really careful about who I donate.
I know, that's why I didn't wanna do anything without reference by the board. I wasn't just going to make a link.
Do you know how much they're cutting?
No.
CCM, I could hope does.
I could look into that if you want more statistics on what they, I'm sure they done their homework and vetted it, but. I just.
I mean, often there's organizations that are already in there that are much better value for a dollar.
If you have any ideas, anyone knows of something you're more comfortable with and wanna make.
I just, I never.
Does the link just take him to CCM or actually to United Nations? It accesses a page that CCM created that links you into, I think, the United Nations.
I mean, I'm with you, but if at least the CCM people can at least, you know, I mean, that's one of the, you know, our membership, I mean, at least that.
We have the trust.
Right.
That's a good question. Yeah, I always question when you donate stuff. I mean, where's the government? And this is a ton of stuff they're getting. How does it get over there?
Well, it's not even.
It's really.
How's it get distributed properly?
Right. They need stuff.
Well, I know that when the Haiti had its earthquakes and stuff, the money that we sent there just vanished. And, but there was already mostly church groups that were already down there because there were guy in Norwich that was involved with it. And they already had it. I mean, we gave money there, we gave stuff there that went right down and you ought to distribute it. That's just money. Just get sucked into a money pool that made up, they get a fraction. So, I don't know.
If it was legit, I would say we should do it, put it on there just to make sure that, you know, with the percentages and all that.
For people expecting, we did our homework, so they got to love me.
Okay.
But the concept is great.
I think. Yeah, I like that.
Okay. I also wanted to bring up the speed. We worked really hard. This Ingrid, Ingrid was a big help by different directors of Public Works and Facilities. Steels, while we've been applying for a grant, they came through at the last second from Congress Court's office. We've applied for a million four hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars to build a six bay garage for Public Works and the Neags. There's there were qualifications and this bit within the parameters that Congress reportedly put out. And we really focused on creating equity for men and women in bathrooms. Also creating security for vehicles. I know bus company just got hit last night. Thirteen buses lost thirteen catalytic converters and that's gonna be three thousand dollars per bus. Not our buses, but another town's buses. So it's just, it's not, but we.
Are they insured and everything or what?
They are, but they're deductible on all of them and you can't get the parts. So now you've got buses you gotta roll for, pick up kids that morning and you come out there and there's.
Yeah, I said they're gonna be two hours late with every town. So it's. Some other towns are helping out.
We put this grant in and we it seemed like we hit all the triggers that maybe we haven't shot.
Oh, that'd be nice.
What do we have for our buses down there as far as monitoring them?
Just a camera on the building looking out at the parking lot. And we watched as a a man siphoned gas out of our employees' cars, but it was after the fact. You know, there's no security telling you.
There's no, there's no, there's no.
It's not like a ring system where motion activates something. I know, we.
The legislature just pushing, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
I'm just gonna say, I mean, the legislature's pushing the law to make, you know, obviously scrap yards or whatnot, you know, can't accept that and I, when I, when I turn that to make sure that there's no market.
Yeah, but all they have to do is drag them down south or something.
Yeah, but then, I mean, to start.
Right, right. I have the local market.
The car, the vehicle has to be there. They're gonna take that, something like that, yeah.
We don't even own those.
You're right, the buses, the schools using are subcontracted to a contract.
However, in, in minimally, of course, you have to consider the neighbors across the street and everything. And in motion detected lights, floodlights, just glass the place.
That's true.
You know, at least that, because they work under darkness, so.
Right.
And also, I know that Columbia Garage. I don't know the name anymore.
The old Collins?
No, down at the bottom of the seven eleven. They put in a system that alerted the owner when they came back a second time, six months later, and the state police grabbed three people and let them go the next day. So their charges weren't even for all. So it's very difficult.
For whatever reason.
Yeah, so, okay.
Also, I just wanted to let everybody know Saturday, April twenty-third is the Hop River Trail Alliance Cleanup Day. If anybody wants to participate. It's, there's a section of the trail Columbia has on Hop River and hoping that people.
It's from Mackey's, coming toward the main moose.
I gotta tell you something, be very careful. Because there's so much barberry around Mackey's where a lot of ticks spray. I once went in there with the dogs. I won't ever go again.
Yeah, the ticks are bad right now.
Right there, they're horrible because it's like a field of barberry and barberry tracks. The mice, which are ticks and it's, I won't, I won't go there. Dogs are crazy.
Leases out.
People twenty-three now. And it's, the exact time is ten to twelve, rain or shine, volunteers are needed.
It's Friday. My wife and I went for a walk down here about three weeks ago, one nice afternoon we had or something. And it's behind trailside treasures there.
Yeah.
It's a very things that aren't treasures seem to go in the back. So, and, and they commented on it, come on, all our neighbors, help us out and stuff like that. And I thought that's a real bad section. But I, I, I asked about maybe the town, if there is a need or if there is a volunteer from the Department of Public Works, we would pay a couple of hours to have our trucks here, because I don't know where all that stuff is gonna go once they get, you know, we're trying to effort the people that are putting this together. When all this stuff comes out of the woods and they pile it up close to the road, who's getting it and where's it going?
Right.
So they better have a plan. The other plan is maybe we have our trucks, one or two down there to be able to accept that stuff. And haul it out of there to somewhere. And we're trying to help, effort in helping and also making sure it doesn't become on trash more from sixty-sixty. So.
It's all that.
But it's a big cost. Thank you. Lot of correspondence there. Nice article on the shopping center down there. I talked to Howard, he was very pleased. Thank you, Connor, did a good job. And some other stuff there, if you could read good. Now we get into transfers. We have some sizable transfers. I, I move to approve the transfer stolen forty-four thousand eight hundred fifty-seven dollars as presented. So everybody has this in here. Salaries administration, sixty-seven, where's that, Mark?
That's under the, we're second budget, we moved it from group insurance, we had some extra there.
What salary is that? Good job. Okay, salaries, tax, new services, that's fine. Salary, advanced services, two thousand. Two thousand dollars extra on advanced services?
Yes, the, it's, it's traditional hours of the van drivers because they've been running it a little more than the original budget hours. So Pat, mainly Pat, that driver has been working more than normal. Trying to keep up with what they're.
Okay, so two questions. Is that rectifying the upcoming budget?
Yeah.
And she's not making so many hours that we're paying her over penalty areas? Salaries, the senior center, I asked about this when it was high. Basically, we had somebody working in the assessor's office and she was needed more over at the senior center. That's just a flock of the assessor's office putting her over to the senior center. But she has to be paid by the senior center. Inland Wetlands, well, John Valente probably worked more in the hours training our new inland wetlands agent than he did all the other time he was here. But it took a while to bring her up to when John felt very comfortable in her doing an outstanding job. So that's coming out of contingency, seventeen thousand three hundred dollars. So overtime for facilities, no, it's coming out of overtime to pay facilities.
That was just a.
Just professional tax from general supplies, what department is that?
Building official and facilities. So this was estimate the cover facility repairs. We had a well go bad at Red Park at the old concession stand and bathroom. So the well was shot. We had to replace the well. So it was a four thousand dollar bill.
And do some work on the facilities vehicle. Okay, great. Animal control, move some over, move money over to that since we've since we brought on East Adams Animal Control. And I will tell you, I was pretty skeptical. I was in Norwich when I got the call about the young girl who got bit by the animal. And I, I was eighteen minutes away.
Was it the coyote on?
Yes.
Coyote, okay.
And when I drove up there, the, the, what's his name? Mike, Mike. Mike was already there patrolling the area. So he was there pretty quick.
Was it assured that was the coyote?
We're, we're not assured.
We don't have confirmation, but by the description she gave and talking to Mike and the way the attack happened, seemed like it was definitely.
He had already canvassed the area, talked to every homeowner. He had gotten the dog listing from the clerks downstairs, knocked on every door, no dog fit the description in the whole street. So she underwent rabies.
I was gonna say.
Should actually not put the rabies shot right in the wounds.
Really?
She's a, she's a boxer, professional boxer. And she had a big fight coming up in April. She had to cancel the fight.
Oh, gosh.
Was it? Worked out good.
Bet you there were puppy pups in there somewhere.
Yeah, because they, that's. Or December.
Yeah, so contracted services. General supplies, initial contracted services. Outside budget of permit fees, new software. Yeah, so remember we voted not to pass that on, the surcharge and the permit fees.
It's in next year's budget. Hopefully we'll be back to it, but we have the. The four and four dollars.
And the. And then some. So totally forty-four thousand eight fifty-seven. Good news, the money is able to be moved around. Contingency, I think this is only one time this year we've taken money out of contingency, we used to set aside seventy-five thousand.
So we still have some.
We still have about fifty left. Which hopefully we pass back to. All those in favor of transfers?
Aye.
Next to. Total refunds, made the motion, we approved refunds, totally two hundred twenty-four dollars and twenty-six cents, presented in list.
One excess payment.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Opposed, thank you. Approved payment bills, I moved to approved payment bills, totally one hundred two thousand five hundred sixty-six thousand sixty-six cents. Consisting of twenty-one, twenty-two emergency, twenty-one, twenty-two regular credit cards and bank checks. Looking through, anything to jump out at you?
One vehicle had a whole bunch of repairs. What was that?
We had the senior center van lose its brakes. And we had a new pump required on a backhoe. It was expensive. And we had a van repair, but it was ordinary dollars for the facility vehicle. For something like that.
Good news is with the senior van, everybody got to their appointment ahead of time.
We also had to fix, we had to send it to another location that would fix the electric.
I was gonna say, that's three years old.
I was gonna say. No, that's, it's, it's at least three years old.
Right, so that's, that's don't last as long as they used to.
I know, I think the solvent, it's all just eating every brick one we have.
So that wonderful environmental stuff that's destroying our bridges and that stuff.
So this is the last, the radio upgrade?
Yes, so that was the radio upgrade for the DPW, all their vehicles and the fire pumps.
If you wanna see ours, Mark has it.
In my office, I can monitor when the lease, true K.
I can't get them off it.
I can't talk to anybody, I can listen. I can talk to DPW.
You're a, you're a volunteer fireman.
No, volunteer police for Essex.
Okay, so yeah, they're they're addicted. I don't let a scanner ride in my house anymore.
The uh, we also have an emergency channel, so if we do have an emergency, fire police and all of us can talk on that channel altogether.
Okay, all right, we got it.
Well, yours is, I'm ready to hand it to you.
Oh, Mr. Chief, I
When it goes bad.
Pretty good editor, so.
All right, well.
The one is whiteboard. We're gonna make sure you have that.
All those in favor of paying bills? I I can't stand all this new stuff. I want it plotted on the board.
I know.
I need to see it plotted. For the two years in an A, you know, plotted on the
Chicago Fire had that as a whole episode. When the internet went down, we did everything manually.
Yeah, that's cool. We were in Guantanamo Bay, last battle, the ship was pulling out after six weeks of professional training. We pulled off the pier and all of a sudden, boom. Captain says, what's going on, sir? The computer's cracked out. We're just gonna have to go back. Please expect to notice, you're in a war. You gotta fight this war, captain. Use your vessel. Looks around, he goes, anybody know how to run this conventionally? Yes, I do. It was great. It was so much fun. It was years ago.
Your convention.
You sure? We just voted on.
Okay, I didn't hear.
We did.
Wait.
Audience citizen, anybody on there? We got somebody named Lejave, Jala, Jalave? Okay, there she is.
She's here. She's still here.
Uh, okay. And my wife doesn't think I'm funny. I don't get it. Say, oh, you're acting so funny. My wife goes, yeah, it's great, right? So funny. Okay, um Board member, audience citizen, Ian, Alton?
Uh, I think I've said it, no. Thank you.
Uh, board member comments?
I just have one. The lottery, if we're gonna continue with it, I'd like to see who lost this year taken out if we do the same kind of thing next year, so.
Perfect, so they never have the same person losing fifteen years.
Oh, I get it, so it's like you pay your dues.
You know, would, in my luck, I would lose three years in a row, so that's just why.
No, do people
Takes the randomness out of it, but I understand.
If people, do people always use it? I mean, could, um sometimes there's empties.
Well, that is a complaint, because not everyone has a boat on there, moor and even if they pay for it.
Right.
Uh but I don't know how you
Also, they've already paid for it.
Right.
Because frequently, there's a lot of empty moors.
Well, they could just
Those calls, go to the
The sea dogs will take care of
What's that?
The sea dogs and the cornbread, they'll drive some water away.
In this executive session, just go briefly.
There is.
Just sort of, feel like comments? Thank you. Uh at this time, I'd like to uh move into executive session and uh and that is it, Connor, thank you.
Seven fifty-four. And Jen, I'll tell you when we come back in, so you can be on.
Sounds good. Good night, everybody.
Night, Jen, nice seeing you.
Take care.
Regular meeting will resume at eight fifty-seven, seven. Uh and I made the motion, re-adjourn the board's meeting. All those in favor? I didn't know. Make sure we get these back. It's public. Do you want these back, Tom? It's a public
Those are nice things, things
So I, there's no strategy.
They call it home for a reason, right?
Oh, yeah, we um bill sign, also the public meeting sign, that went around.
Yeah, they're both there.
Enter sign. So when you quiet it out, voice is right backwards and on the opposite side, yeah, that's what I didn't hear for a second. Actually, you can write pretty good.
I'm a sign maker. I can do it upside down, backwards, mirrored, whatever you want. Because you're, they all just become figures.
Status quo is, I'll tell you, I love them. You know, you just that's why over there, I've asked for a big map of the town.
We have.
Put it, put up there where roads are down, where there's, you know, hazards and stuff where people can pass, there's stuff on, I'm not
It's not as easy to see.
On the phones and stuff?